It's five o'clock and I'll call this meeting over. Welcome everyone to here, good to see a few people in the audience. And we'll start out with the, start with the pledge of allegiance led by Sean O' and the county administrator and the invocation re-provided by Kendra Hayden. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you so much for today and the opportunity to gather together and work for your good. I ask that you guide and direct the hearts and minds of our county leaders and for protection of our citizens. Let us all remember we are meant to be examples of your love and grace and let your actions show that character. Be with us and always say and do, in your name we pray. Amen.
I'm gonna head to the prayer a little bit, please remember our servicemen and people over in Afghanistan right now, so trying times for them. Amendment to the agenda, do we have any amendments we need to add to it? We're good to go, so we got it then. All right, moving right into special recognition, do we need to do it now or post?
Um, we're good.
Well then Sean, I will let you do that, I have something here that he probably would like.
Yep, so we have folks from Shirley Ricardo Bernardo.
Yes.
And Melinda Roberts are here from Shirley. You may remember in 2018 they did an expansion, $10 million, seventy, uh, forty-two jobs.
Forty-two.
So the end of the three-year period is up and now they're now eligible for their, their check, their grant, and I want to ask Kendra to join us too if you don't mind. Charlie, you want to come on out? You want to do a picture? Come on up. And I'll let, Mr. Chairman, present you the check, $125,000. Where do you want it to sit?
Probably, probably sit up there.
I don't have my match guns.
That's okay.
Sir, how you doing? Nice to meet you.
Ready, ready?
He's trying to use my, with his mic.
It is. I'm telling you, I'm talking out there now.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you all. And just to let you know, this is the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund check, the incentive grant that we got, so thank you all, congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Another expansion if we can add to it. Right? Sean?
First we wanted to make a statement.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. All right, moving into minutes of the previous meeting now. Do we have a minutes of the August 10th meeting? Do we have a motion, we accept them, or does anybody find anything needs to be changed?
It'll go through.
All right, have a motion to approve, any, motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed likewise. Sounds like it's unanimous. Public hearing. I'm just gonna read this, I guess that's all right. As a part of the budget rollover process, we have put together a summary of items to be included in the fiscal year 21, 22 budget amendment number one. In total, the proposed amendment is the amount of $5,330,083 and includes the school board rollover request from the last fiscal year of $210,678. School board E S S E R two stimulus fund request of $973,911. The first round of A R P A stimulus funding of $2,923,675. Grant funding rollover of $606,819 in total. E P A, E D A land sale proceeds of $450,000. Rollover funds from CARES Act for emergency management vehicle equipment of $50,000. The acceleration of the operational hours of the convenience station of $15,000 and the explorers after-school program partnership with these schools of $100,000. Since the total amount exceeds the 1% threshold of the county budget, a public hearing is required prior to action by the board. Accordingly, we have advertised set public hearing for this meeting. I will call the public hearing to order right now, does anyone sign up to speak? Nobody signed up, would anybody like to hear their voice?
I, I signed up over here.
I'm not a communist.
Okay.
Nobody wants to talk on the budget, that's a $5,330,000 budget increase, so I'll close the public hearing. Presentation.
Um, we did, there was a, a resolution, it, it is the board's discretion to go ahead and approve the, I guess, a motion to waive the rules and then to, we would like to ask you to approve the resolution so we can go ahead and make the changes to the budget.
Okay, do I have a motion to waive the rules? Have a, have a motion, you're here, do I hear this?
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion on waiving the rules? Hearing none, all those in favor of waiving the rules, say aye. Any opposed likewise. All right, now I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment.
So moved.
Have a motion to approve the budget amendment, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Any opposed likewise. Sounds like it passed.
Thank you.
Now we'll go into the economic development plan presentation. I believe Sarah Gillespie, Amanda Livingston, and Kendra Hayden want to speak to us.
Yeah, just mine. We'll just stay, I'll stand right after you go. Thank you all for giving us some time to talk today about some of the projects that we're working on together. So we're excited to be able to combine our talents and the resources that we all have to work together to continue to move Smith County forward. And over the past few months as we've been working together, we've worked to kind of identify where we're strong and where our shortcomings are and kind of put together some things that we think are next steps in developing what we're doing together. So the first thing that we're going to begin with is the Smith Strong logo. I'm sure you guys remember the Smith Strong Fund, which was when we worked with the board supervisors, Smith County Economic Development, the Saltville I D A, and then the town of Chilhawee. And we put together a fund that small businesses who had been impacted by COVID could come together and receive funds to show our support and to help maintain the development that we already had. So we want to run with that Smith Strong theme of that we are stronger together and we've shown that, and create a logo that allows us to all use it on our taglines for our email, on future swag we may develop. We'd love to see the board of supervisors, county administrator, everybody use that on their email. So that's our thought with that, and we'll be working on a new logo for that. And that's kind of how the chamber sees it to be used. And so I know Amanda's got some thoughts too on things that we're gonna do together.
Well, sure, so we, in addition to the Smith Strong logo, we're looking for ways to pool our resources because individually we have very limited budgets and very limited resources. We want to make the best use of tax dollars. So a logo is an example, there is an expense for developing that potentially, but we can share that together and then we can all benefit as a community. Another example we've identified is the need for video for marketing purposes. We've been working with Lori and the Mount Rogers P D C. We've identified quality of life video that could be really great quality professionally-produced video that could be used in a number of different ways. We can, you know, the quality of life is appealing to tourists, it's appealing to new businesses who want to come or expand or recruiting new employees, and it can also be used to promote small businesses for the chamber. So again, we're looking for ways to make the most out of every tax dollar and get the most bang for our buck.
Additionally, there's a few ways that I can use the videos and the marketing and the logos and everything for local economic development. We do a lot of tours, they're called fam tours for our state folks, regional efforts to bring people in so that they can see what our county looks like, what the assets that we have, and the quality of life that we can offer. So pooling our thoughts, our resources, our time together to create a package that is not only visible and accessible, but engaging and professional, will make our efforts go a lot further with people that, that want to expand here or live here in any aspect of county living. So I'm excited to work with them on that and get something more marketable for the counties.
And kind of the final piece, it's not something that's necessarily new, I'm sure you're all familiar with the Chamber magazine, we've done it for several years now, but it will be the first time that it's a team effort. So we've always kind of developed it with a thought in mind that it could be used for economic development, whether that's to show our quality of life or whatever it might be. And then also that it could go to tourism conferences or be available in the tourism center, we've placed it in the hotels before. So we're gonna work together to make sure that it's really covering all of those aspects that we need, so it's a more usable feature for all of us. And so that'll be everything from our newcomers guide that we'll continue doing that shows, you know, where to hook up your utilities, information about the school system, and those sorts of things that we get a lot of requests from. But then also, we'll highlight what's happening in the area of business development and things like that, so that when Kendra's working to bring someone else here, they can see there's a lot happening and we really have a great quality of life. And same for Kendra, she, sorry, Amanda, she can use it to show all the tourist attractions and to highlight different things every year. So I think it's gonna be a really nice thing for us to all work on together and use a little more efficiently. And so we'll continue to do that and work together on it, and I know that Kendra and Amanda both have a lot of things that they want to use it for as well.
Well, and with the limited budget that we have in the Tourism Association, what we've decided to do is supplement that magazine with rack brochures that can go just out to the welcome centers, it can go to the hotels. But rather than a massive huge brochure that we can only afford to print to, you know, every two or three years, we want to really focus our budget on dining. So we're dine in the county, and that does change, unfortunately we just lost a restaurant, but we're adding them all the time, and so that'll be kind of a supplemental piece that will be reprinted as we can afford to and as restaurants change. And then something focused on, on attractions, so major attractions in the county. And again, hopefully we, we're not duplicating efforts, we're supplementing what the other entities are doing. So again, trying to get the most bang for our buck. And then one other thing I did want to sort of just mention is grant opportunities. We feel like we, and we have some success already, that we are gonna be more successful in applying for grant funding if we present a united front. So the chamber and tourism have already worked in conjunction together. I'm proud to say that the town of Saltville and the Smith County Tourism Association have each been awarded a DRIVE 2.0 strategic planning grant, and that is of only 10 awarded this grant cycle in the entire Commonwealth. So two of the 10 are here in Smith County. And by working on that process in parallel, we're gonna get, we're gonna get a plan specifically for the community of Saltville, and we're gonna get a tourism plan for the county as a whole, and they're gonna work in conjunction together. Separately, tourism is also working with Kendra's office and with the Mount Rogers P D C to go after some federal funding for outdoor recreation tourism, and that's a lot of steps to go through for that, but if we're successful, that would be in the millions of dollars. And again, we, we think that as a cohesive entity, we're gonna be a lot more successful than just one going it alone.
I just wanted to provide a few closing thoughts too on kind of our roadmap and where we see our team working together and just kind of give a high-level overview of kind of our discussions and where we see us moving forward. So Amanda, Sarah, and myself believe in creating an environment where questions drive our innovations. After all, our world is created by the questions that we ask. We are excited to build positive relationships for growth and sustainment for our citizens and businesses alike, and we understand that growth happens collectively. When you have a network of cooperatively managed ideas and actions, it creates a more resilient, equitable, and sustainable local economy. Together, the chamber tourism and local economic development will establish new collections, collect connections, and opportunities for collaborative, community-driven innovation that will form the basis for a more diversified and equitable local economy. We will bring our boldest ideas, push for community voices to be heard, and explore ways our local economy to improve and grow. We will strengthen the weak spots and build new ties by drawing on the wisdom of others who came before us and the talents we each possess. We want to think to the future where we don't operate from a mindset of scarcity, but one where we ensure continued success and future generations are considered and planned for. We are the lucky few that to fight for our home, our community, and each other, and we want to do this in a meaningful and beautiful way together.
Thank you all so much for bringing us some time.
No, no, I have questions.
Okay.
How well have you, have y'all made this presentation to the E D A board for Smith County?
We haven't.
We have it first.
Hopefully you're planning to, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and how well do you think you'll be working with the E D A?
I mean, we already have a great working relationship with them, so I think it'll be seamless.
I think it's what we need.
I think relatively closely. I mean, Sarah and I have already worked very closely together with the E D A as far as the Smith Strong Fund, and already looking for new ways to use, you know, hopefully new, new money that comes in in, in a way that will help our small businesses and the county itself. And with Amanda, she's already given a presentation to our E D A on ways that tourism can drive economic development, so we've already started that process.
Yeah, 'cause we don't, if we don't promote ourselves or promote what you're doing, it, it can die on the vine, so.
Absolutely.
I just think we all need to get together and make sure everybody's involved in pushing it. Any other questions?
I just have a comment, and it's short and sweet, and I just want to say thank you. I've wanted to see this for so long, my heart is just bursting that it's happening, so thank you.
Thank you all. You give us the tools and resources that we need to be able to be a team, so we appreciate you all.
And we do hope to see you again, maybe quarterly, on a quarterly basis to provide you updates as we go.
Hopefully more often because we have so much going on.
That's right, yeah.
Bring it back anytime.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
We need more of those on the schedule, by the way.
Not just at budget time.
Payment of invoices, accounts payable, and additional appropriations.
I just kept this on the, on the agenda just in case we had any, but we don't have any.
Okay, just wanted to make sure in case somebody walked in last minute. Citizens Town, anyone sign up for Citizens Town?
Did.
Mr. Hall. Mr. Grant Hall, come forward, we'll state your name and address for the.
My name's Grant Hall, one five two old Mill Road, Chilhawee. You all know why I'm here. Talking about the, the meals tax. And I think everyone who was at the last meeting seen that most of the people at the meeting were not in favor of it. So now we're at the point where the board is going to actually put up a vote for, to rescind that particular meals tax. Way I understand it is that one of the winning people on the board who voted for it needs to bring it up for a vote. Is that correct?
I think it had to be done at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So we missed it.
Right, but.
But you're correct in what you think.
Okay. But is it still up for a vote?
It's up, all right, due for discussion today, isn't it?
Well, you can put it up for discussion. I would like for the full board to be here when the vote is, I wouldn't want to have a partial board, because it is a close vote, I understand that. But, but the way I understand it, you know, those who are in favor, I think yours is in favor, you know, you're my supervisor, if you could bring it up for a vote, I appreciate that. And this, it's all I want to say, just to bring it to your attention again. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Hearing none, I close Citizens Town. Looking down there. Going into old business now, report from the community and put to me on the meals tax. Sean, did you want to address that?
I can, I can. Yeah, kind of following on Mr. Hall's comments, just to formally report back, we did have the minutes and the summary in your, in your packet for, for your information. We had a, a decent, I wouldn't say decent, I'd say pretty healthy turnout in, in Seven Mile Ford. And we did have a few things that I did want to address, if nothing else, just in front of the board so that we, we, and the, and the citizens understand why the county makes decisions that we make. One of the questions was, we just spent a lot of money at the back of the dragon, which is true. I'm not sure that, that's something that I inherited, that we, I guess has been on, in the, in the books, on the books for, for several years, we finally got it built. The sad news is, it was built with grant money that could have been, only been used for the back of the dragon. If we didn't build that project, that 700,000 or however much it was, 800,000 would have gone back to the state. So it was almost a use it or lose it type, type of issue. One thing, the bill, the ordinance only penalizes small business. You know, my worry, as I listened to a lot of the comments, was that the, the business owners felt that, that they themselves were, were being asked to pay the 6% rather than the customers. It's a pass-through tax versus a real estate-type tax which is done by the, by the individual. But I did want to make sure that that was clarified. We do have CARES Act funds, we do have our funds, we had $5.2 million that we received from CARES Act. We will be receiving just shy of $5.9 million in the American Rescue Plan Act. We've, we received half of that this past May, we'll receive the other half next May. Those are one-time funds. Of course, you know, the CARES Act funds are already spent, we've, we spent those, had to spend those relatively quickly, and did a lot of the, the gap fillers, I'd like to say, catching up on some C I P investment-type projects that we've spent that money on. Now, the $5.9 million, we have several years to spend. In my personal opinion, I think that that should be considered generational-type expenditures so that whatever we do, and we'll have that on the agenda later on, but whatever we do needs to be something that in 10 years, folks in Smith County looks back and say, wow, that was awesome. You're rather than, you know, go out and buy another set of, another fire truck or ambulance or something like that, we can do that with normal operational, year-to-year funding, but, you know, we need, I, I think the CARES Act or the ARPA money really needs to have a, a bigger, bigger impact.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Some of the comments that were made that night, and I will say, I appreciate you letting me join virtually for that meeting, I was in quarantine, so I appreciate y'all taking the steps to let me join, but I was thinking about some of the comments after the meeting and was thinking about this ARPA funding, and I wasn't sure what the specifics are on that as far as setting up some kind of, you know, we have incentives for manufacturing just like we did for Shirley and like the enterprise line and different things like that. Is there some type of fund that we could set up that would support like the small businesses in the county and tie in with the Smith Strong Fund that the ladies were just talking about that could be maybe an ongoing grant program that our small businesses kind of apply for or something?
That's actually one of the, one of the topics that, that the ARPA does try and address, you know, businesses that were affected by the COVID. The definite, or the, sorry, fix my mask, the, the expectations or the directions by the treasury basically just said affected by, but they haven't defined what those effects yet are yet. The good news is, we have until 2024 to allocate and 2025, 25, 26, one of the two, to actually spend it. But I think that definitely needs to be one of the, the things that we can use this for, be creative with, with how can we incentivize the, the, the businesses, preferably smaller versus the larger.
Right, and that's kind of what I was thinking, because we already have it set up for the larger companies in the county, but if we could just set it for something smaller, I don't know, maybe it's a use.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
To address some of these things that you're mentioning, Sean, I know that small businesses repeatedly at the public hearing or the public meeting stated the challenges that they're facing.
Yeah.
And we've stated that in our current budget, everything's covered. Now, I know CARES money has come in handy and it won't be perpetual, but for this year, there's really not a need to inflict more taxes on this community. Is that not right, Mr. Chairman?
Well, the, the current budget does include the 250,000 that we anticipated.
But that's kind of discretionary, including adding a position. That was according to notes.
Yes, ma'am, so if, if, if the 250,000 did not happen, I think there are ways to address the budget. Yeah, sure.
For sure.
Yeah, as far as the, the new position or.
Because there's quite a reserve in that discretionary. The other part that we don't seem to focus on much is the general citizenry of this community. Many people have said, this is gonna be a hardship for us, lots of jobs have been lost and people aren't working, for a family to go out to eat even at a spirited spa sleep. So I think that's another good component of this. So thank you.
The, the other concern that I just wanted to bring up, that was brought up about the ballot, the issue, how the, the last time that the, the meals tax was on the, the local ballot or the county ballot, that it failed. And that was, I think that was a comment that basically said towns voted at that time to have a meals tax and the county voted against it. The towns have had meals taxes since the early 90s. The county's ballot initiative was, was November of '08, and it was about a, I would say 60-40 split against the, the meals tax. Fast forward about 10 or 12 years, and that was, there's been a big push on the county side to be granted equal representation tax-wise in cities and towns and with the General Assembly. And just in the last year, year and a half is when that changed, that ballot requirement was removed. So basically, taxes that towns and cities are allowed to do, counties are now allowed to, to do equally. So that's just a clarification of, of where we are with, with the ballot versus not ballot. I'd be glad to answer any questions, I think it, again, I think it was, we got some, some good feedback, some, some fairly decent turnout, so I, I personally think it accomplished what the board wanted to, to get some, some input on the, on the issue. But be glad to answer any questions if you have.
Anyone have questions for our administrator? Hearing none, we thank you.
Okay, I'm thinking a lot about this meals tax, praying about it, looking at the total picture, seeing what we're dealing with in the school system as far as cases, struggling with workers, things like that. Give it a lot of thought, debated it back and forth, and I'm gonna make a motion that we delay the implementation of the meals tax until July 1st of next year to give our businesses a chance to get the workers, get their businesses back on track, and hopefully by the pandemic will be over that we can get our workers back in place, so it would be implemented in July 1st. That way we can have a chance to study and see where everything is and go from there prior to the next budget cycle.
I proudly second that motion.
So my motion to second, have any discussion? This is a motion to put it up, it won't automatically take effect in July or it take just revisit it. Talk about.
No, the ordinance is adopted, the effective date right now is October 1st. So his motion is delay implementation to July 1st, so by 2nd, the business owner that sells food would have to collect the meals tax.
Of 2022.
Of 2022.
The tax should still be on the books, but they won't.
Unless the board puts it off further.
Right. When you put it off further, you repeal the ordinance.
Correct.
Right.
So is that part of your motion, Mike, is to reevaluate it at that time? Is that what I heard you say?
No, we still, we still look at, I mean, if we see next spring.
Next, in July?
Yes.
So it's not like it's set in stone next July that it'll go into effect and just do.
Well, we would, yeah, we'd delay implementation till July 1st, but if we see next go, you know, we would have an opportunity to look at it, but it would be implemented in July 1st of 2022.
But it will be reviewed before then?
If we don't delay it.
Unless you bring it up.
It'll have to be brought up again.
Right, I understand, but is that part of your motion?
That what?
Okay.
Just, just to delay the.
Okay, just to delay.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Could, could we make it part of it, because we'll be doing the budget process anyway? So if we do it, should we say in June instead of July, because the, like, we'll be. So if we do it, should we say in June instead of July? Because the, like, we'll be voting on the budget in June. I would think it would be better to do it all at the same time. Because it would be?
The ordinance is adopted. It's just a matter of when you're going to start collecting the tax.
Right, but if it, if we're going through the budget process and?
Which is going to be February and March, right? Generally, you're going to be finalizing it and then voting on it in June.
Correct.
You hope it's over by end of April, right? At least you know where it's going. So when you have those budget discussions about that and you're talking about revenues, at that point, you would be projecting the money coming from the Mills tax and putting that revenue in your budget. Or if, you know, at that point, you could do a, at a meeting repeal it because you don't want it, and you pull the revenues out, right? Or you don't count those revenues in your budget, like, because my understanding is Sean put those revenues in the budget this year. And if you don't collect this tax, you've got to make adjustments in the budget, which he said he can do. I don't know if I'm making any sense. Your budget process, really, your heart of budget process, February, March, maybe April, end of April, you should be almost finished, other than tweaking with what the General Assembly is giving or not giving. Your Mills tax is going to be discussed during that time, whether you have that revenue or you don't, right? So you need to be discussing, are we counting on that revenue to come in or are we not going to count it?
Got it, okay.
As of now, with this motion, if this motion passes, then that tax is implemented on July first.
But during the budget process, we could still?
You can change it and come back and say, I have a motion to repeal the ordinance. Let's set a public hearing to repeal.
Okay.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, one last question, and it's just more informational. I know in the last packet, there was a really good report on the regional jail, and you served on that committee, I believe. And it was noted that if Bristol joined the regional system, that it could save Smith County maybe a hundred thousand a year. So, right? Did Bristol choose?
In answer to that, there's a lot of what ifs, and that, well, number one, both of the sheriff candidates for, uh, city of Bristol have indicated they want to continue to have their jail. So the chances of them joining the regional jail just took a big drop. Uh, state of Virginia says they got to do something. Their jail's not adequate. Bristol's town, uh, city manager says they don't have money to build in their jail. They do not have the money to improve the jail because they're up against with their debt limit. So it depends, it's a lot of, it depends.
And it still isn't decided, is it, Mr. Chairman?
Right, there's so much outstanding on that.
But if they were to, it looked like from that report, some potential savings would be?
Well, it also comes in that if they were to come into the system, they would be the largest user of the regional jail. And our cost is associated with who uses what.
Yes.
The problem is, our court systems now are sending less, well, it's not a problem, I guess, but they're sending less people to jail. And so less people you put in jail, if you do send somebody there, it's more costly.
But also, Charlie, the flip side of that is, if we have, which we're seeing this year, we have less debts that we're paying for that this year, which, so I think we need to be totally transparent with that.
So it looks, it's good both ways.
Yeah.
So there's many who want it, it's hard, but overall?
But anyway, as far as revenue, I just wanted to make that point.
I have one more question. Do we know when we're going to get the casino revenue or whatever is back?
I, I believe a portion will be next fiscal year and the full amount will be the following fiscal year. That's at least what we've been told on, at, on, on our, on the regional side. So a little bit next fiscal year and, and the full amount, we, we should see it the following.
And how, how much is anticipated for that?
Oh, I've seen numbers anywhere from two hundred to five hundred thousand.
Yeah, I mean, I know our numbers were really broad even for the Mills tax, and so it's hard, okay.
Okay, the, um, we have a motion on the floor to delay the implementation of the Mills tax to July one, twenty, twenty-two. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of delaying, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it's unanimous. It's delayed until next July. Thanks everyone for your comments on that, by the way. Proposed recreational committee partnership.
Uh, nine D first. Did I miss that on the agenda?
Oh, I did. I did. We'll, we'll go to the ARPA review committee.
We've already, we've kind of briefly talked about it a little bit, but, um, uh, at the last meeting, we, we discussed having a, a community meeting or a community group that would come together and help review the project ideas and, and proposals for what we're going to do with this five point nine million dollars in ARPA funds. I think it was discussed at the last meeting to try and have one person from each district appointed to the committee, along with the budget committee, uh, to, to do that initial review, make a, a full report to the board. Probably, you know, late winter, early spring, maybe even that far out, but depending on what all projects we have. At your dais, I, I went ahead and printed again the, uh, that what I, what I saw is the expectations for this committee and, and oversight, uh, issues or items with, with the board being the, board supervisors being the final say. But, um, I did, knowing that Mr. Stevenson wouldn't be here tonight, I did speak with him about ideas of who he would be interested in and, um, appointing. And I'm going to reach out to, to his person tomorrow, um, to, to check and see. But if nothing else, I'd like, I wanted to see if, for one, if, um, the board members had names yet. And two, um, what process you wanted to go with, um, with collecting the names? If you wanted us to, the staff to reach out to individuals to explain it more or, or, um, how you, how you wanted to, to move forward with it.
I have, uh, Mr. Speaker, I was going to say, I would like to have about a week to look and find the best person that I could find that would agree to do it for my district, so.
I would, I would assume that this would be, this, this necessarily have to come through the appointments committee. I think it would probably be something maybe at the, the first September, mid-September fourteenth meeting. We can, we can try and plan to have, have names, and by then I'll, I'll be able to speak with Mr. Stevenson's individual too.
Myself would like to see us have a committee to do it, and as I've told, I've already got someone interested in, in the committee that I'd like to see on it, so. You know, somebody that we as a board member can talk with and, and have them help talk to the community for us.
And if there's, if there's any, um, any questions you have as you're talking to, to the prospective members, uh, let me know. I'd be glad to help either give you the data or, or help in the conversations.
So just for clarification on my part, we are moving forward with this committee?
Yes.
Do we need to vote, sit or do we just?
I think we could vote at the September fourteenth, um, to, to establish, and these members are.
Okay.
If that works for you.
Works for me. Now we're going down to the next committee, a proposed recreational committee partnership.
Well, um, I don't know if, uh, uh, the folks with the Smith twelve want to speak, but basically at the last Smith twelve meeting, we had an interesting conversation. You may remember a couple of meetings ago, we were talking about the ARPA money. And I think it was Mr. Stevenson that brought up, you know, the, the need to do something for the youth. And with, with that money, and that's, that's a good way to spend generational money. It got me to thinking about, you know, if we did something for the youth, the hard, difficult thing on the county side is, we don't necessarily have an, an oversight or a department or a structure for youth. Uh, other counties have offices on youth or rec departments or, or whatever else. So we brought it up at the, um, the last Smith twelve meeting with the three towns. As you know, each of the three towns have some form of recreation programs. So we, we got to talking about, um, maybe the, the, the underlying structure or groundwork needs to be laid with establishing a, a recreation committee that is the county and three towns and possibly even the schools to, to participate and start planning on, you know, what, what can we be doing? What should we be doing? What can we do better? What, what programs are out there that we're not doing that we can afford? But, you know, I just wanted to lay that on the, on the table of the, the board for your consideration to see how you would like to move forward. All three towns were, were, I think it'd be safe to say, were very supportive of, of having some type of joint structure with the, with the county. Uh, and I think this would be a great way to, to pull all three recreation programs together. Right now, I think you have maybe everybody paying, playing in one town only or, or, or what have you. I, I'd love to, and, you know, don't shoot the messenger, but I'd love to have a, a time when uh, an Atkins-based team plays a Saltville-based team in Saltville. Or maybe they play in Chillicothe halfway between or something like that, to where the kids are, are, are getting to know each other much earlier uh, than they, than they do in the schools. But that's just something to, to throw out as a, as a, as a what if and see what direction you wanted to go.
I'd like to add to that, too, the towns are, were willing, the state at that meeting, that they would continue to fund it. In other words, what they're spending now for recreation, they would continue to support with, with, on the county level for us. It's not like, it's yours now, we're taking our funds and going home. They're willing to still work with us on that. So if we could pull those funds and have one county-wide recreational department, now the swimming pool and the parks and that type of thing, wave pool, they would all be maintained by the towns. We're talking recreation only.
This could be an amazing partnership opportunity, I think, between the county and the three towns that we could really build off of, so.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Um, I'm talking about recreation. I'm thinking about the federal campgrounds and state campgrounds like that are in the county right now. Most of them are closed, which is unfortunate. A lot of it's to do with maintenance, but we're missing out on a lot of our tourism because there's, the folks who are campers are not coming here because they don't have anywhere to camp. Hungry mothers fall all the time. Could this be something too that would kind of expand out? Like Bristol, for instance, has Sugar Hollow, and they have people that camp there all the time. And that's a way to generate revenue at a low, overrated cost. To build a campground for the cheap, so is, is that something we could also look at as well?
Possible, yeah. I think that, I think the, the, you know, the, the sky's the limit with, with the conversation got started with something with youth. But as you start thinking, I mean, honestly, and this is the bean counterpart of me, it's not a moneymaker. It's not, it's not going to pay for itself, except if you see it as an investment in your county's future. So, you know, something like a campground where you could get some revenues back to help genera, to help offset the costs of, of other programs. So, yeah.
Well, that's what I was, because I think Roy Tooten has the same thing, the Roy Tooten campground. Yeah, if we could look at ways to do that.
True. Yeah, and I've thought about looking at models of, of, of other counties. You know, Washington County has an interesting model where they have a director and a, and a, an assistant, but they support all of the private youth organizations, the, the Little Leagues and the, the football programs or whatever. And it's not necessarily county-operated, but they county-sponsor it. They, they, they help make sure things happen. That might be what, what we go. I don't know what, what the end result would be, other than a strong partnership, hopefully with the three towns.
Well, I know the Salt, the Saltville campground, I don't know where they are with that, Russell, I don't know if you know, but that could be something, I know it's kind of a hard time getting going, but maybe with the shot in the arm from the county as a partnership, that would help.
The EDA is working on the, um, the cleanup grant, um, so that's still probably eighteen months out, if I was a, a big man. But, um, it is, it is working, moving forward, but that's, yeah.
But at least we start the conversation. I think that's the key.
Mr. Speaker, I ask you, uh, one thing that we used to have, this, you would know this, that for lots of years here, like to have a little softball field. It was, I'm telling you, I played out there in many tournaments, and on weekends, you'd have thirty teams and you had twelve, fifteen players plus all their families. And you wouldn't believe the revenue that brought in to our local restaurants and gas stations and all that. So I would love to see it revived and some other thing. And I think if they lost funding, I think the town, the town of Marion used to run it through their rec department. And then since it's in the county, I think they decided that since it wasn't in town limits, that they were, they cut the funding for, which I understand.
Yeah.
So there's some things like that I think can really, really boost our revenue by helping our, our small businesses and restaurants and things like that, so.
And it adds the, the three young ladies that were speaking before. It adds that quality of life. You know, to have something that, that the adults even can do, yeah, and that, and that brings some equal.
Yeah, I'm a hundred percent on board with that.
There's something going on at Saltville, a Little League field and softball every week. There's a crowd there every weekend.
Well, I think they have a very active nonprofit that keeps that rolling.
No parking. I mean, the lot's full, people parking way out coming in, and you have good, good participation with it.
I think this committee would give us a chance to look at what the community wants in this respect and find out if it's, if it's just the seven of us wanting it or does the community want it? And, uh, this committee would give us a good chance to see that.
I agree. I'll work with the managers to see what we can do on the process to get things rolling. And we'll, I'm sure we'll report back to the Smith twelve and let the board know how that goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any more comments on that? If not, we can't be done already, can we? I guess Scott's going to have a lot to report to us.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I sent an email to the board with a list of my projects a week or two ago. I'm slowly working on those, uh, but nothing to report at this time. Other than I notified you that the action by Mr. Galhan was taken over by the insurance, so they're going to defend that. So your bleeding can stop on that. The insurance will pay that bill, so.
Yes. Uh, can I ask you a quick?
Yes.
The thing you filed on four eighty-four Riverside Road, any, when that, when that might go?
Um, I hope it goes next week.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Was that a nuisance at the bank or?
It's a zoning violation thing, yeah.
Or is that always?
So, so Churchland Drive, I've almost got ready. I need to send it to Clegg, which I hope to do tomorrow, to get him to review my facts, make sure I've got the right letters as exhibits.
Correct.
Uh, so I'm hoping to get some kind of response back from him, at least by Monday or Tuesday, because it'll probably be late tomorrow afternoon before I get it to him. And then once I get that one, I'm hoping to be able to convert to the Riverside thing and essentially plug names, tweak, obviously tweak the facts and the letters that we sent. And then file that one right after, and then check with my list that I have from Clegg and whatever else he has. The, the next step is to go to court. And then I've got the template, and hopefully I can push those through fairly quickly, is my hope.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Sean, I believe it's down to you now, County.
Sure. The only thing I have is, um, we had a VACO, I wouldn't say, call it a conference, but we had a, a VACO summit last week. Uh, they said it's something that VACO fits together every three or four, or every four years for the statewide candidates to come together. But we have the full annual conference that's held every November. It's going to be, uh, you have a, a summary information there, November fourteenth through the sixteenth in Norfolk. Two things, one, if you're interested, excuse me, interested in going, please let me know soon, because these, these rooms go very fast. And two, they've moved the conference down a week when it was in, um, Allegheny County. They always had it on the, the second Monday of the, of November. This year is the third Monday. So second Tuesday, we had already pushed our meeting to the Wednesday. So if board would like to go back and, and make sure we're, we stay on the second Tuesday of November, we can do that without. Normally, we push it out because of VACO conference, but we can go back to, um, I didn't even bring the, my, my calendar, but.
November eight, uh, ninth.
Thank you. Um, but right now, currently, your board meeting in November is scheduled for November tenth. So I recommend you go ahead and, um, moving it back to the ninth, just so we can stay on normal schedule with second Tuesdays.
Okay, before you go on, anybody want to entertain that motion? Or do we want to leave it like it is?
Say, leave it like it is.
Yeah.
Go with, stay with the tenth?
Stay with Wednesday.
Now, people are used to it.
Yeah, I just leave it for the tenth then.
Okay, next year it might fall right back again.
Yeah.
But that's all I have.
We need to take this chance for the advertising here. We need to know, but really, we need to know by the end of September if you attend, plan to attend the VACO conference. And I really suggest, if at all possible, you need to go up there, as we're working with the state. Uh, it'll be after, be right after the election. It'll give you a chance to meet the new people in Richmond. And it's so important when you're working on grant money or you're working on, for them to be able to recognize, well, that's somebody from Smith County. You're, you're more than a name on a piece of paper, tell them, when they've met you at the VACO conference. It means a lot to the county to have that recognition in Richmond, so. I think if you, if you're going to be on, on the board, you need to, maybe not go every year, but you need to go when there's a new representatives up there. And I think this year we may see some new ones, so. That's my publicity for that one. Supervisor comment time. Who wants to go first? Judy, I'll start with you this time.
Well, I think one of the most important things this evening is to be responsive as we were to the request from the community to delay the meals tax, I'm glad to see that. I'm glad to see our board take note and be willing to change positions when it's necessary, and I think that's what our community really wants and desires. I'm also thankful that school's going smoothly, it seems, and all the efforts that's happened, and our numbers have gone up since COVID, which is a little bit of a concern, so I just hope that, you know, we'll all take the precautions we need to, to try and keep the numbers down again, so. To thank everybody for all they do to make this county better.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I did want to echo Judy's comments about folks coming out and expressing their input for the meals tax, and again, I'm thankful to see this coming together so we can reevaluate, pushing it to July, hopefully get us through COVID and maybe back to some form of normalcy, hopefully, so we can reevaluate. I'm excited about, again, about the partnership with the Tourism Chamber and Economic Development, and also excited about our announcement last week with the governor with the wood grain expansion, it's always great when it's in your county, but it's even better when it's in two counties, so Grayson County is going to benefit from that as well. And just want to say, I appreciate everybody working together, communicating, working to move this county forward, and I'm excited to see the, the partnership with the town, all three towns, possibly with the county, I'm glad to see the fences mended there, and I'm glad we're all talking and on the same page now, so everybody have a good evening.
Mr. Sturgis.
I really like what our chairman of commerce and our tourism coming together, and also our county economic development person, the, Smith County's strong, I'm a great believer in that, and a lot of times when I tweet out information, I put Smith County proud, because I am a Smith County proud, and like I said, we're not always going to get them all right, but we're going to work hard to try to get them right, and make as much, you know, progress as we possibly can, like I said, to make this the best place we possibly make to live. Want everybody to be safe, as the, you know, we are, I was in a couple of meetings the other day where they said that hopefully this thing will peak in two or three weeks, and that it may start, and that's kind of what we saw last file, and I pray that is the case, and we're all taking as many precautions as possible to get there, and keep us, keep everyone as safe as possible, yet move forward. Another thing I'd like to say is, appreciate Mr. Rutt and the after-school program, four of our schools are up and running, I emailed the person who's over today just to find out, currently at Atkins, we have eleven students, eleven kids, at Chi Elementary, we have fifteen, Marion Elementary, right now we have four, and Oak Point we have four. Right now, Rich Valley, at Sure Grove, no one is interested at this point, but they said they probably would be coming down the road, so with, with, with the last minute putting this together, I think hitting four out of the six schools, we've done well, so I appreciate Mr. Rutt and his efforts to get this up and going, and like I said, I think it's going to be a great thing for the citizens of the county.
And I did ask Ms. Rutt to come, plan on coming in September to give the board a report, probably the second meeting in September.
May I ask a question about that real quick? I had a couple parents, friends of mine that said they didn't have to get information about it, but most of them from Chill Howie said, well, I did, well, now I see why that's the largest number, but there was a couple from Atkins, so I don't know if letters maybe didn't make it to them.
Well, they would, we'd sent out letters, they gave them out on back-to-school night, and then they've sent some flyers, I think, home with the kids.
Okay.
That's where it's at right now, because, like I said, we're, we, it took us a while to get a coordinator, and you, as you know, you can't have it until you have a coordinator, and so we finally, I think, got a good person to do this, who is working, and, and so I think, like I said, if we have some people who have needs, all they got to do is let the principal of the school know.
Okay, that's what I was going to add.
They all have applications at the school.
Okay, that was going to be enough, I'll tell, thank you.
And I'd be glad to make more copies to send them out to the kids again, and I can get Ms. Rutt on that, for sure.
Maybe our newspaper might put a good little article in there about it, too.
Maybe, I think we have some of it.
Yeah. She hides behind the column here now, but the power of the press can be mighty, let the parents know what's going on, so, thank you. Mr. Cobb.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming, showing up, echo what Mr. Sturgis said about the COVID, if you haven't got your shots yet, please get them, it's our only choice to fight this thing, hopefully we'll defeat it before long, and just keep working at it and everything, you know, glad about the meals tax, we put it off for a while, I think we revisited in, in the spring, we can, maybe the county's in check before we can repeal it altogether, and that's the name of the game, you know, the county needs the money, we need a tax, if the county can do without the money, we don't need a tax, and we'll be able to know that then, and give us a better idea of where we're at, and God bless each and every one.
Mr. Rutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to echo my comments around the recreation opportunities. I was fortunate enough to get to work a umpire tournament down in Kingsport two weekends ago, and I was amazed at how many teams that were down there, there was at least three teams from Smith County, drove all the way to Kingsport, over an hour, to participate down there, in a tournament that they spent five hundred dollars injured fee. I have no idea what, whether they stayed overnight in a hotel or what, but I will say this, coming off the field between my games, I've heard several girls say, "Coach, are we going back to the hotel between games?" So these teams drove from North Carolina, Georgia, West Virginia, obviously in Tennessee, and they spent a weekend there playing ball, and they come to play, they spend money, they, that's what they do. So if we can develop something where we can tap into that revenue, the closest field that they were using was in Dublin and Kingsport, were perfectly centered right here between it to intercept some of those teams that are going north or south, or west, I guess. It's a revenue opportunity for us, we can just do it, plus it services our youth, and it would drive some local restaurant sales, not only that, potential hotel sales. And then I'll put my gloom and doom hat on about the COVID, it's serious stuff, guys, this, this Delta variant is pretty rough, the hospitals, if you haven't been paying attention to them, they, their capacity is filling up, they've shut down all electric surgeries now, so that's my understanding of it, so it's, we're sliding back into it. And my big, the sky's falling comment is, the Lambda version is on the horizon, it's not responding to any of the three vaccines, so let that sink in. So get your vaccines, get covered, let's shut this stuff down, and hopefully we won't slide back into a shutdown economy again. Other than that, I'd like to echo comments about Mr. Rutt and his team, thank you for your support, and the other supervisors, and I will be quiet at this point. Mr. Chairman, it's back to you.
Thank you. I'm going to take a chance to make several, I'm going to take a chance to make several comments tonight, I was, I'm tickled to see the EDA, Tourism Chamber, and our EDA working together to, I mean, you can get so much more done if you work as a group and you're compatible and you're not fighting each other. We're working, bringing it to Smith County, and that's the goal, you know, growing and make life better for our citizens. Secondly, the Smith twelve, you know, and if you don't know what that is, that's the chairman and vice chairman and county administrator, and then each mayor from the town and each administrator from the town getting together, and one council member, and meeting generally in this room, we may move it around, but, and just talk about whatever anybody needs to talk about, there's, nobody's locking anybody in on anything, but, you know, if the town comes in and says, "We're having a problem with this," maybe another town says, "We've handled that problem, here's what you do," or we at the county level say, "Hey, we have this, you know, what do we do?" One of the towns say, "Well, we'll, we'll work on that trash problem for you." I mean, we're getting things done that never have to come up in here because we're working together to help one another, and, I mean, I just, I'm tickled to death to see that working like it is, it just, it's so good. Meals tax, I think here tonight, we showed that we're willing to work and listen, you know, we didn't have to have a special meeting, we had to listen, we didn't have to extend the date, we listened, you know, and I think we all knew it was not the right time, but we needed to get it done, and so, you know, now we got, and it still may not, we may get to next May or June, and we may roll it some more, who knows? But at least right now, it's not a problem to worry about. Finally, I guess this is more of a question for our county administrator, we spent, and I should have asked the three, the eight ladies when they were here, probably ten years ago, we spent good money to develop a logo for the county, what happened to that?
So my understanding is that logo is the one that's being used by the Chamber and the Tourism Board, I don't know if it ever got traction on the county side, I'll look at the deal.
They never wanted to implement it. The EDA is, is working on redoing theirs, they weren't too happy with it, it was more, it matched Marion's logo a little bit more, so I think they're trying to make it look like all three towns and the county, so I think they're tweaking it a little, but the county never implemented use.
We sure spent money on it, you know, if you're going to spend money, if you want to be willing to use what you spend money on, so.
I'm just digging, I've seen the Chambers and the Tourism, I don't know that I've ever seen the one at the county that was actually made for the county, so I can do, I'll ask Ms. Aiden to see if she can vote for me.
I mean, I'm old now, so my numbers and everything gets foggy, but we spent somewhere between forty and forty thousand dollars on it.
No, it wasn't that much, that's, that's what it would have been if we not, if we wouldn't have jumped into partnership with Francis Southwest Virginia.
Maybe that was, I knew the number.
It was only like three thousand, three or four thousand.
We'd have spent more than that.
Well, they must have gone back and done something after all that goes.
But anyway, let's, let's see what we got there, and finally, I'm just happy that we as a group can talk about things, and we don't go home mad at one another and say, "Oh, we'll come back and get even, I think we can work," and let, we've, we still got to educate, not educate, inform the citizens what we're up to, and let them know what we're looking at with our money that we want to spend, let the citizens become involved and know, talk to our community, you know, we make decisions, but we got to have their input, we got, we got to know what they're thinking. And finally, and I'll hush up, in such a place, you'll find a little piece, two pieces of paper there that says, "Write in the United States Constitution." Second or third week of September is Constitutional Week, and we signed, the mayors and myself got together today, and we signed a proclamation recognizing that week, and there's a lot of things with the Constitution that we're not aware of, but just a little bit of bullet points there that you might want to read about and look at, and, you know, our Constitution, we're, we're a unique country, and if you've never spent time with another foreign country, you don't realize how unique and how nice we are here in this country, but, and our Constitution allows us those rights, so having, that's my sermon for tonight.
Now, I have a copy of the proclamation I want to hang on the wall here, just so we can remember that every, every time we have it.
Do you mind reading that, just, just the bullet, the major part?
Whereas on September seventeenth, seventeen eighty-seven, following weeks of vigorous debate and compromise, thirty-nine delegates from twelve states, including James Madison, George Washington, and John Blair from Virginia, signed the United States Constitution, which ratified the form and function of our nation's system of government, and whereas the Constitution was written to uphold individual liberty and justice for all citizens in the United States, and these principles are reinforced in each of its first ten amendments, known as the Bill of Rights, and whereas the two hundred and thirty-fourth anniversary of this historic event allows us to reflect upon rights and responsibilities as Americans to celebrate the foresight demonstrated by the framers of the Constitution, now, therefore we, the officials of Smith County, Virginia, on this day of August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, do hereby recognize the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, as Constitution Week, and call this observance to the attention of our citizens. Signed by the Smith County Board of Supervisors Chairman, Clerk of the Smith County Court, Mayor of Town of Marion, Mayor of Town of Chill Howie, and Mayor of Town of Sawville.
Thank you. But having heard that now, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
And we'll see you here next month.